Uh, first item on the agenda is roll call.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Shaker.
Here.
Alderman Selly.
Here.
Alderman West.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Arnold.
Here.
Uh, next item is the invocation led by Pastor Dave Hixson from Faith and I Methodist Church, be followed by a pledge of allegiance from Alderman Johnston.
Please bow your heads and pray with me. Holy and gracious God, we give you thanks for this place and for this city that we call our home and our community. We ask for your providence and for your inspiration for all those who've gathered here this evening that you would inspire them and their deliberations and discernment as we lead our community and our city in the best possible way forward. We ask for those things and give thanks for all of these things in the name of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Thanks ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the United States of America and to the world, for which we stand, on the nation, on the God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, next item is approval of the agenda. I believe we have a couple, please.
Uh, yeah. There's, um, I have a change for this evening. Uh, I had a request to add under discussion under item ten. Um, the overlay district and comments made at the, from the meeting that was held at the Historic Society on Wednesday, uh, August twentieth. Okay, and then, um, I don't know if, if this is, uh, normal or not, but, um, should we add a birthday section to today's agenda?
Yeah.
I don't know which one it is.
Yeah, just want to let everyone know.
I thirty-two or something, no?
Wish Alderman Arnold a happy birthday today. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. What, what about the res- do you want the resolution on the night?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Uh, based on comments back from you guys, um, whether you wanted to add that resolution or not.
Okay.
We can add it to the agenda and, um, you can give me feedback at that time.
Okay.
And that's resolution number?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, thank you.
Yeah, fourteen thirty-nine. Okay, uh, do we want to add the, well, do we want to add the resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, you want to make a motion to amend the agenda to include discussion over overlay district under discussions and add resolution R fourteen dash thirty-nine?
Yes.
Okay. Got a motion from Alderman Arnold, uh, second Alderman Johnston. Uh, any discussion on the two additions to the agenda? All in favor of them, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Agenda is amended. Uh, next item then is proclamations and badges for backpacks for Officer Shannon Larkin.
Mayor Shannon Larkin is here. Would you like for, um, Mr. Gary to read it into the record?
Sure. Whereas Officer Shannon Larkin has been a member of the Grand Valley Police Department since March two thousand seven, and whereas in two thousand fourteen Officer Larkin initiated a badges for backpacks program to raise funds to aid in providing backpacks and school supplies to, to Grand Valley School District students in need, and whereas Officer Larkin has distinguished herself by successfully coordinating the badges for backpacks program for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. And whereas the badges for backpacks program raised two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to purchase backpacks and school supplies for fifty-four Grand Valley students in need. Now therefore be it proclaimed, proclaimed that the City of Grand Valley Board of Aldermen and I, Mayor Mike Todd, acknowledge the dedicated service and commitment of, of Officer Shannon Larkin to the youth of the Grand Valley community. In witness whereof, I, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed this twenty-fifth day of August two thousand fourteen in the City of Grand Valley, Missouri.
Okay, next on my agenda then is citizen participation. Uh, we ask the citizens to step forth to the podium and microphone. If they please address the board and please give your name and address for the record. Have anyone who wishes to address the board this evening? Saying none, move on to consent agenda.
I move we accept consent agenda.
Have motion from Alderman Skully to accept consent agenda. Do I have a second? Second Alderman West. Any discussion? Saying none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Next item is a public hearing to set the tax rate for two thousand fourteen.
Want to open the public hearing?
Nope, okay. All right, I'll open it then. Okay, anyone want to, uh, address the board in regards to the proposed tax rate for two thousand fourteen?
Just on the side note, Mayor, the, uh, the levy rates are unchanged from when they've been, uh, last few years.
Okay. You want to wish to, we will close the public hearing then. Move on to discussion. Uh, first item is update conditional use permit for racetrack recreation area. Anything new on that, cheers?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, next then, next item is discussion regarding the overlay district.
This time we received a phone call from, uh, Alderman Johnston today, um, asking if we could discuss the overlay district based on comments that we received last Wednesday. Um, Alderman Johnston, Mayor Alderman West and I, uh, did attend that meeting. Basically it was just to open for, uh, first concern businesses in the downtown area and, um, Alderman Johnston approved.
Well, one of the big concerns they had was the overlay district. There's a lot of businesses or property owners down there that have buildings that are perfectly suited for, um, businesses that are identical to them across the street and they can't open them for those. Um, I was under the impression that I, unfortunately I don't remember if I was on the board when that was accepted or not, but I was under the impression the overlay district was to govern new businesses coming in and, um, what appearance, things of that nature they would have. And I think we've, um, um, in, overenforced it. I think we've had a lot of businesses that have come in. Um, we're spending a lot of money on economic development and we get businesses to call City Hall and say, I've got a gas station I'd like to bring in or whatever, and are immediately told, no, isn't, isn't suited for that. Um, I think we need to, um, put the overlay district on hold, um, review it, um, get a consensus on what it should be doing, if, if, if it's even needed based on the, the new comprehensive plan we have coming in. But I, I think we're unfortunately totally wrong and I think we're running businesses out of town and, and we're hurting, uh, our property owners in town.
Just a couple of sidebar comments. Um, some comments that I did hear last Wednesday night were regarding, um, businesses that came to staff and wanted to talk to them about putting a gas station in as your example or, or utilizing a, a, currently an actual example is the, um, red brick garage building that's just past the railroad tracks on the west side of the road that, um, a business wanted to come in and, and, uh, put, I believe, an auto repair shop. And because it's been over a year since that had been a, uh, business like that, and I'm going to look to Ken to make sure that I'm giving you this story correctly. Uh, they were, it, because the overlay district is in place, it's not able to do that type of a business. I do want to ensure all of the Board of Aldermen though, that when businesses come in and they ask us, am I able to put this there? We do go down and explain to them in great detail and tell them, well, according to our overlay district that we have or according to our code of ordinances that we have, you are unable to put this type of business in. However, you can go to the BDA, uh, seek a, um-
Variance.
Variance, thank you. And, um, they're told on how to, shared with how to go through that process, what they need to do, how they have to go to the BDA to accomplish that. They are shared that information. So I don't want you to think that we're just telling them, no, and then we're not doing our jobs and we're being difficult to get along with. That's not the case at all. We encourage business, we want business to come to Grand Valley and staff's doing a great job of doing that. So, just wanted to, I wasn't given the opportunity to be able to share that last week and did want to share that with all of you now.
According to a couple of their comments, they were just, made the call and just told them no.
I would, I, I disagree with that. Because I, I know the staff that we have in place right now, maybe a few years back that might have happened, but the staff that we have here now is very good about sitting down and being able to tell them from start to finish how they- because that's one of the things when I first came with, you know, just because it, they, a code says that they can't do that, let's find a way to help them so that they can get it done. And, and so that's the direction that staff has taken in what we're doing.
So do they receive a packet of information that explains everything or?
Do we-
A packet of information?
Yeah, I mean, it depends on, yeah, depending on where they're wanting to go, yeah, you give them, if the code's over there, want to give them zoning map and show other areas that, if they want them to go ahead with that location, other areas where they can go right in or his zone for that. If not, we have our, you know, development application packet that outlines the steps you have to go through for a variance or any other kind of request.
What, what is the length of time to go through that process?
Well, for a, for a variance around, for a variance around thirty days. If that board meet as needed, if not regularly scheduled meeting, so by the time we get an application in and get notice out to the newspaper and property owners within a hundred eighty-five feet, it probably is around thirty days, within thirty days.
Mayor, I've, I've heard issues or situations of possible dysfunction in, in the use of what people wanting to use their buildings for versus what the overlay district has set there for, uh, that particular area. It's been some time since we passed that ordinance and I think it's time that we maybe have a workshop to review it to see what's working, what's not working, and what we need to change to make it, uh, work a little better for the, you know, we have people that have invested in the community and they're limited in what they can do with their facilities that they have here and it's put some of them in a bind because of that. So I think it's time we need to go back into it and look at it and make some adjustments to try and make it more user friendly.
But don't be part, I mean, the new comprehensive plan will adjust part of that, correct? But maybe not say anything?
Yeah, it'll address from, from a big picture level, um, the future of the city and, and, uh, the type of, um, planning that we want to be able to do for the future, how we can address that and whether it's through the overlay district or whatever. To answer Alderman Arnold's request, I think a work session is a good idea, but from a statutory standpoint, I don't think that this board can do that. A conversation that I had earlier today with Mr. Gary, because it, it does affect our planning and zoning ordinances, I believe that that has to go back to your planning and zoning board, because your planning and zoning board is a statutory board.
Yeah, ultimately, I, I mean, I think that you guys could discuss what you wanted to do, um, but the process is, um, all, this is a zoning change because that is a, a specific zoning area, um, just like there's residentially zoned areas or commercially zoned areas, um, or industrially zoned areas. This is its own specific category. Um, and so you can't just, um, suspend the overlay district or anything like that because then there would be no zoning there, because this is its own zoning category is the, is the overlay district. So a change to this category, this zoning category, um, would have to, um, go through the Planning and Zoning Commission, which has to have a public hearing, um, give fifteen days' notice, have a public hearing. Um, and then based on that recommendation, then it can come to you guys, um, where the Board of Aldermen also has to give fifteen days' notice of, and have a public hearing, um, for that zoning change. Um, but I do think you can have those discussions, um, but you can't act on those discussions without going back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and starting that process there. If, if that makes any sense, I'm, if you've got questions?
Yeah, I was trying to think, trying to, you know, figure out what order. I mean, does it help us to have a combined meeting with them or should we just stay hands off and let them have a workshop? Let them do their thing and then?
Well, under the, you can't have, under your ordinances and then the statutes, um, you can't have a combined meeting. I mean, you can have a combined-
Combined work sessions?
Uh, you can have a combined work session or just a brainstorming type of a meeting, just like you can have, you know, any type of a workshop to, to discuss city business. However, that workshop would not be a public hearing, um, to enact a zoning change.
So if you're set-
At the point where you want to, I think, discuss whether you even want to have a zoning change, a workshop would be acceptable or, and, and legal. But that wouldn't, that wouldn't count as anything for your, your public hearings that are required to actually enact any zoning change.
Any questions? Scott, everyone?
Phil's the question.
I was under the impression the planning and zoning was a board to make recommendations to the Board of Aldermen for decisions.
That's correct.
What they actually set. They set based on what we vote on and what we approve, right?
Uh, in, in this situation, the city ordinances, um, direct that zoning changes go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for public hearings first. Um, and that's based upon the statutes as well, that, that the city has to have a Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, but the Planning and Zoning Commission has a public hearing first and then the ordinances then require this board to have, um, another public hearing for a zoning change.
Could-
So, and that's based on the city ordinances and that, that's what the procedure that's set forth in the city ordinances.
Answered my question.
Okay.
I, I still think we need to have a, a review of it, whether we do it with the, them as a work session with planning and zoning so they know where, where we're at and what we're talking about.
I don't think it does us any good to have one just us, I mean, because it's going to go to them ultimately. So if we're going to do one, we do one with them. Or we just have them do it. I mean, it doesn't do us any good to have them by ourselves, I don't think. What's everyone's thoughts?
Probably a combined work session or?
Yeah, a combined work session.
Because they can have a work session, they just can't have a combined, like, formal meeting.
Sure, sure, they, they can have a work session, it just, that work session just wouldn't count as any public hearing.
Just be discussion.
Right, because, because what you would do for your public hearing, um, would be to notify of what the intended zoning change would be. Um, and then that would, that intended zoning change has to be published in, in the newspaper and then you have a public hearing and you have to notify all the property, you have to specifically notify certain property owners, you know, within three hundred feet of the, of the proposed zoning areas that are going to be, um, changed and all the property owners within that, um, zoning district. Um, then you have to have a, a public hearing on that. So you have to know what you want to do, um, first before you can have your public hearing on, on your zoning.
Is everyone on agreement trying to set up a combined work session then? Okay. You guys will try to get some dates for that and get that out to everybody?
Yeah.
That's going to be probably a chore because we have us plus all the others in the pool.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh-huh.
Will the work session be open to the public?
Yeah, it wouldn't, yeah, it'd be open to the public, but it, there wouldn't be public comment allowed at it. That would be the public hearing.
Why, why waste your time because you guys don't know what we want? I mean-
That's what the pub, that's what the public hearing would be for.
Do you guys, do you guys have something to discuss?
I think the board has a- Thinks an idea, um, what, you know, what needs to be done, so. I mean, that's what the public hearing's for. If anyone wants to come to public hearing and address the board at that time, I mean, there'd be two of them, so.
And I would ask anybody that has any comments or concerns for that area that they make sure and contact the representatives and let them know what their concerns are and what their wishes would be as well.
Will there also be a public hearing for the, any planned changes anyhow?
Yeah, two actually. There'll actually be two public hearings.
One for the board or?
Yeah, one for the board.
Yeah, then, then one here, yeah.
But I think, you know, if they put together a list of things that they want to address, we could discuss that in the workshop.
Yeah. I mean, I just know that it'll be, with those two boards together, we allow public comment and looking at, for us to set five hours aside. So, I mean, I think, I don't know. Scott or the P and Z board, are they aware of issues down there? Have they heard before?
Not that I'm, not that I'm worried, you know, other than a few comments there and there, you know, I mean, they never come to the meetings and complain about it. A lot of them, from what I understand, was with this new comprehensive plan that we just done, we're kind of, we're waiting to find out what that was going to do.
Yeah.
To the, to the changes. So, but then this meeting they added and I was kind of surprised to me and, you know, you know, we heard about complaints.
So, might be a good idea that if there's any, I mean, I know a lot of us have heard it, but might be a good idea if businesses are out there and want to address, maybe address some individuals on the planning and zoning board because it sounds like maybe there are ones that don't know as much about it. I mean, I think I have a pretty grasp on it. I've heard about it for several years. Well, uh, just see if we can get together with that then.
Right, no, I'll be, uh, once we talk to the planning and zoning, I'll also be sending an email to this entire board to find out available dates and times.
All right. Okay. Anyone have anything else under that? All right, see no more, seen nothing else in our discussion, no new business? Or previous business, we'll move on to ordinances?
This is the second reading of, uh, Bill B fourteen dash fifteen, which will be ordinance twenty-three thirty-seven. An ordinance amending chapter three forty-two alcohol-related traffic offenses, adding section three forty-two point one hundred, consumption of alcohol, moving motor vehicles prohibited. Section three forty-two point one one zero, transportation and motor vehicle prohibited. Section three forty-two point one two zero, exception vehicle for hire. Section three forty-two point one three zero, exception living quarters of a recreational motor vehicle and section three forty-two point one four zero penalty.
You got questions? Because I may be in opposition to this now. Can I make the motion to, to accept this to the opposition?
Yes.
Mayor make a mo- motion that we accept Bill fourteen fifteen for its second reading, make it ordinance by, ordinance number, what was that number again?
Twenty-three thirty-seven.
Twenty-three thirty-seven.
Okay. I have motion from Alderman Arnold to approve Bill B fourteen dash fifteen for its second reading, making ordinance twenty-three thirty-seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Headley, any discussion?
Yes, I, I talked to a number of people since this because I wasn't real sure our community needed this. And I know there are a few communities out there that have it and staff provided some information shows that about thirty-one communities in our state have an open container law. And, and some of those I was aware of because they have colleges in the community and that's part of the reason why they have an open container for the youth utilizing and having some of that in the vehicle. Um, it, it had some issues for me in that, one, I didn't know if we had the hard data to, to show the real necessity of it. And while I know that we haven't gotten numbers, that the officers have seen some situations of it, uh, there's no, no raw data to, to support the need for it. Uh, it, some of the people I spoke with said, you know, it's just government getting in the middle of what we're doing in our privacy. Again, you know, and it, people look at their cars as the extension of their home and that's why, you know, if you want to do a search in a home or in a car, you have to have a search warrant. So there's a certain amount of privacy in there. Uh, it's, we've got so much where our community thinks that we're getting involved in telling people doing, taking away their rights and so forth. You know, this is another one of those situations that we need to consider, is it, is it really something we need to be delving into? And that's something that even the state legislature has wrestled with for the last seven years or better, about whether or not they even want to have an open container law beyond the driver in the vehicle. And it hasn't had enough support to do that. Um, so, from the people I've heard from about it, yeah, they were fairly upset about the fact that we considered it because they didn't see a need for it. And, uh, I know there have been occasions when I've gone and picked up someone from a situation where they had too much to drink and they took a drink that they had with them and I drove them home. Well, in that case, if I'm being a good Samaritan, take him home because he wasn't able to drive, I'd be getting a ticket for an open container because he's decided to do it.
Actually, you would not have with person that has an open container get the ticket.
Well, it was, wasn't-
We can talk about searching and whatnot and having a search warrant, whatever, some plenty of you, some plenty of you. And if that person, that passenger's possession, that not the driver, that's on the passenger, not the driver. And this is what, in the event that you're getting right now.
Okay, well, the way I read it, it looked like it could be everybody in the vehicle could end up getting a ticket for-
Yeah, it, it, it does apply to this ordinance, does apply to the driver as well. So the driver doesn't have necessarily be in possession of it? No, it, it, yeah, if the passenger, it's because the driver's in control of the, of automobile that the drivers, ultimately, it's the passenger and the driver will be, the driver's responsible for his passengers as well.
So, you know, you're, you're dragging, and if they're having, you know, one of my kids happened to get in car with me and go with me and pick this person up. Now, they're in a situation too, because the way I read it, everybody in the vehicle could feasibly get a ticket for an open container in the vehicle, because it could be being passed around. That's what the look that the police would be having at it. And the, some of the, some of the cities here that have looked at stuff said that open container laws haven't proven to, to reduce any alcohol-related accidents. I don't know if that's right or not. Uh, you just first have to get the individual that's driving that's intoxicated off the road. We have enough laws to deal with that and we've even made those more stringent with the, uh, dropping down to point eight, point oh eight for the, for that situation. And I, I just, lacking more documented evidence that we have a problem dealing with this in our community with youth running around or somebody, you know, significant number of people running around, uh, driving in our community, drinking while they're driving, uh, it, I just don't see the need for government to intercede in, in somebody's, what somebody's doing in their vehicle. The other thing I, and I didn't get an answer on is that we're going to allow somebody in a professional vehicle that's driving around with a professional driver to have, have it in the back of a bus or a limousine or something. The, uh, then there's also an exception for somebody sitting in a motorhome and they could have drinks in the back of the motorhome. Well, you got people going back and forth to the cheese games in an RV or whatever, you know. It's not a whole lot of a stretch from a vehicle to a, to an RV. You get somebody gets a fifteen-passenger van, they're going to go tailgate at the cheese game so they start having a few drinks on the way down there. Driver's not participating, but now you got whatever number of people in the vehicle can get a ticket for having alcohol in the vehicle. And, uh, while I think it has its place if there's a need for it, I, I don't see that we've gotten information that shows the need. I agreed with the, the ordinance about open containers in the public where you're out on the street in a part, public area and intoxicated basically is going to be the case as well. Uh, so I, I, I supported that with this one because it's, it's going a step further into somebody's privacy of the vehicle. I, I just don't think that it's, it's something that we need.
I disagree, I'm sorry Dale, but, I mean, most states, I was shocked to find out Missouri didn't have it. I thought all states had, I was surprised, but eleven or thirteen states don't have it.
Yeah, it's more than federal states I think have, actually have it, it's all in the, um-
Everywhere I've ever been, it's, it's been a law that I know of. And it just, um, it just seems to add temptation or ease and, and difficulty enforcement. Like, uh, Chief Ambrose says, if, um, you know, the pass, or driver has a vehicle here, all they have to do is hand it to the passenger. Um, I think it just, it, I don't see the need for, um, driving in a vehicle with open containers.
This is a situation where I was approached by a couple of officers about trying to get this ordinance passed. And I think also we need to consider that this is one of the times we're trying to be proactive where so many times we're up there passing ordinance is being reactive on something that's happened. That's the only thing, yeah, well, maybe it hasn't been an issue where we had it actually passed it, but it's a nice tool to have if we need, and that's how they deal with it.
I'm concerned about the timing of this, of this ordinance with what's coming up next weekend.
Relative to-
The rally that's coming up on February weekend.
Anyone else have anything? The officers probably don't keep, they're, they're not keeping data on how many they run into currently, are they? That's something they run into, they're just, I mean, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be any reason they would need to. I mean, they're ready to probably now at this point, if they find a container in the car, they're probably checking the driver pretty good to see if they're under them for a switch thing.
So I do see the conflict of interest with the, with towns, town, or now town cars that are rented, the, the party buses are rented. I do see a conflict there because that's the whole reason they're rented. So that you can go to the cheese game and you can go out on the town and you got a, you got a person driving for you. That's, that's the only conflict I really see with it.
Well, and I did research that, um, I can't remember if I... Yeah, and there's an exception for it anyway.
Yeah, I mean, you're still allowed to do it.
Kind of conflict of interest. It's kind of conflict of interest. I don't see what Alderman Arnold's getting at. So other than that, I, I don't have a problem with it.
The, the only thing, 'cause I never thought of it the way Dale said it, that if you're picking somebody up to take them home and doing the good thing, and you could get a ticket as well. I don't...
That's the only, if they bring the open container with them, right?
Right. So basically, the driver's going to be responsible for allowing that person to bring an open container.
Yeah, because the driver, I mean, the way that the ordinance is written is that the driver's responsible for the car. And so the driver's responsible for the passengers in the car bringing the open containers in the car. And the driver's responsible for the transportation of that open container.
I guess our mind though, how we're looking at it, as we're looking at it for those passengers, not necessarily the driver.
Yeah, I mean, can, can we just, can we just write it to be whoever's in possession of the open container?
You could, except for that's going to be very difficult to enforce because nobody's going to be in possession of it. Because he, somebody gets pulled over, they'll just put their beers in the, in the cup holders in the car and then use that.
What happens now if you pull somebody over and there's pot in the glove box or something? I mean, it'd be the same kind of thing, wouldn't it?
It's in the area of it, generally unless the person that's driving that car knew it was in there and that passenger truly did not. The driver's going to, would say, yeah, that's my pot. But generally, it's in the area of whoever the person is. And that's what I was talking about. It's kind of in the area that this person's in possession of. You're driving your passenger seat and there's pot there or some other kind of illegal substance, that person's going to get charged with it unless somebody else owns up to it.
It'd be the same thing with open container then. They're arrested, right?
But that's not apparently an out-reason on the open container.
Well, it, it does, except for, I mean, drugs are going to be different than, than open containers. Um, I mean, when you've got a car with, you know, say it's got two cup holders that go like this. And you've got one in there and you've got three people in the backseat, you know, if they were all three people could have been using that cup holder. I mean, it, it would be very difficult to prosecute somebody unless they're seen holding it.
Most of the time, I guess, it works out whenever you start your stop and your investigation part out. That generally gets worked out. Because three other people aren't going to take a dive on the person.
I don't, I don't see it that difficult when you pick someone up to take them home and say, you can't have the open liquor in the car. Maybe they're already drunk, so the reason you're picking them up, they're going to get drunk while you're taking them home?
Anyone have anything else?
Are you going to give warnings first? And I'm not a drinker, so...
That's up to the officer.
Well, and the reason I said that is how are people going to know this is a new...
Cut out the, you cut out the information, but I mean, that's just, there's a lot of ordinances that go out there that people don't get educated on immediately, but they're going to learn. Probably word of mouth is going to be the biggest one.
What about empty cans in the trunk?
That's not a problem.
Yeah, yeah, it wouldn't be in the...
I, I, even if the ordinance addresses that, it addresses, uh, uh...
Where, uh, and that's in the three forty-two point one-one-zero, it addresses, uh, alcohol, yeah, having open containers. That if, if there's anything in the trunk or in the back of an SUV or station wagon, they can be there, yeah. Um, they can't be in the passenger compartments. And it, and it defines...
And they're going to reach out and hit to it. It's often reaching harmful.
Yeah, and, and it, it addresses, uh, uh, SUVs and station wagons and vans and those, and those things. And so it's basically if it's in the, the back compartment, you can have it. But if it's not, then you, then you can't have something that's been opened. I mean, that would be, it would be the same thing as having a whiskey bottle riding shotgun. Essentially, you can't have that, you know, even if you're just driving it around. Um, so you've got to have it in the, in the back.
Yeah, everybody jacking it out.
Anyone else on the board have any questions or comments? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Alderman Arnold?
No.
Alderman Johnston?
Yes.
Alderman Shaffer?
Yes.
Alderman Headley?
Yes.
Alderman Scully?
Yes.
Alderman West?
No.
Four-two, mayor.
This is the second reading of Bill number B fourteen, uh, dash sixteen, which will be ordinance twenty-three thirty-eight. And ordinance amending chapter three eighty-two, vehicle weight, size and load limits. Section three eighty-two point zero-three-zero, weight regulations, commercial vehicles over five tons prohibited.
I move that we accept Bill number B one-four dash one-six for a second reading and make it ordinance two-three-three-eight.
I have motion, Alderman Scott, to accept Bill B fourteen dash sixteen for its second reading, making ordinance twenty-three thirty-eight. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Headley. Any discussion?
Uh, we were asked the other day about how some arty miles wasn't included on that.
On this list?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know that I have direction to look if arty miles was on there. Um, it had never...
On the north side, I said, I mean, not the south side.
I'm sorry?
Arty miles is on the north side, wasn't it? Like Kirby. I read it, read it the other day, but I, I asked, actually Yolanda asked about it. How did you come to what roads were what, I guess, was the question.
Well, just over the years, these are, these are roads that truck, truck traffic was historically a problem with. And so at some point, somebody made a rec- recommendation to add this to deal with the issue. So all of these, all of these streets have been on here, on the, the schedule for years. The only one that we're adding is Woodbury Drive.
But regular arty miles wasn't included in that on the list. Where did I see the list at?
Yeah, are you talking about arty miles to, like, towards Halbeck's?
Yes.
It's that, there is no tra- truck traffic restriction over there, is there?
No. I've been trying for several years to dr- slow it down and restrict it.
Okay. Well, that's not something that would be added on. I mean, we would need to do a traffic study. I thought there was some discussion about that. And there was an issue with Halbeck's being just on the other side and then you've got Owida at the other end of arty miles.
I thought there was something, now that, that we even got, we were going to pull them over at one point, weren't we? So we didn't actually put it... Were we just saying, hey, you did their exit? Is that what we were saying?
I do recall that.
Yeah, I recall too, that's, we must've... Yeah, we must've just been telling them to use... So they weren't using the Abzary exit because of the traffic there.
Okay.
Is what it was. And I know we were talking to them and it may have been, we just talked to the businesses and the trucks and...
Well, it got real bad since when they were doing, up there redoing all that. Up there when they were putting it in and they had the, uh, sign of Blue Springs to follow arty miles to bring it to Eagle Valley.
I thought we, when we had that, I thought we just had discussion with Halbeck's asking when the, asking the trucks to...
I don't know what we did. So we're still having quite a few trucks go up there then?
At times.
Well, let's, we, we have to put the counters out, is what we need to do?
Yeah, we can, we can...
Tap the counters out and get an idea?
Yeah, take, take the counts out there.
Well, let's look at that and see if we, if we need to add that one then.
Anyone else have anything else?
I, I will say that arty miles is actually, I mean, it's, it's a fairly major road through town to restrict truck traffic for local deliveries. That's, that's one of my biggest concerns. I mean, it's not just strictly residential. I mean, it's, it's a main connection to Blue Springs. Uh, so we can go out and put the count, counters out there.
A lot of kids on that street.
Oh, I understand.
I get irritated because they dare you. And they got a lot of dump trucks running that street.
Okay.
I, I would just question it.
I mean, what businesses would be, they'd just be going to Halbeck's, wouldn't they? Because if they're going anything on Abzary, they're getting off of Abzary nowadays, aren't they?
I would imagine so, yes.
So it's on the trailers, maybe the, uh, RVs, hotel sites.
Yeah. Just looking at...
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone have anything else then? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Alderman Arnold?
Yes.
Alderman Johnston?
Yes.
Alderman Shaffer?
Yes.
Alderman Headley?
Yes.
Alderman Scully?
Yes.
Alderman West?
Yes.
Six-zero, mayor.
This is the second read of Bill B fourteen dash seventeen and ord- which will become ordinance twenty-three thirty-nine. An ordinance authorizing the city administrator to use funds in the tax increment financing reserve fund to pay the debt service on the two thousand twelve tax increment financing bonds and amending the two thousand fourteen reserve fund expense budget, City Fund three oh-one.
I move that we accept Bill B fourteen dash seventeen for its second reading, making it ordinance number twenty-three thirty-nine.
I have motion, Alderman West, to approve Bill B fourteen dash seventeen for its second reading, making ordinance twenty-three thirty-nine. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Scully. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Alderman Arnold?
Yes.
Alderman Johnston?
Yes.
Alderman Shaffer?
Yes.
Alderman Headley?
Yes.
Alderman Scully?
Yes.
Alderman West? Six-zero, mayor.
This is the first read of Bill number B fourteen dash eighteen and ordinance approving the final plat of Eagle Valley.
Mayor, I move that we accept Bill number B fourteen dash eighteen for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have motion, Alderman Shaffer, to approve Bill B fourteen dash eighteen for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second Alderman Johnston. Any discussion?
Yes, um, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Uh, last year you heard from, uh, planning and zoning on the recommendation to rezone this property. This is actually the property that's located at the corner of Eagles Parkway and Snai Bar. Um, it's going to be used for the school district's new transportation facility. Originally, they talked about using the entire property for the facility. Uh, they have since changed the plat, uh, or, or the, the plans that they've submitted to where they're going to be using the northern portion of the property, thus leaving everything along Eagles Parkway still open for, uh, future commercial development. Uh, all of their entrances and exits will be off of Snai Bar Parkway. They won't access, uh, Eagles Parkway for the transportation facility according to the plan. So, uh, planning and zoning recommends the, the change as well as staff.
Questions or discussion?
Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Six-zero first, mayor. This is the first read of Bill B fourteen dash nineteen and ordinance approving the final plat of East Kansas City Industrial Park, final plat.
Mayor, I move that we accept Bill number B fourteen dash nineteen for its first reading and bring it back for second reading by title only.
I have motion, Alderman Shaffer, to approve Bill B fourteen dash nineteen for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Headley. Any discussion?
Ron, you have the description?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is the final, uh, approval for the east cam, I'm sorry, the final plat approval for the East Kansas City Industrial Park. Uh, it's the tenth plat. What they're doing with this is they're creating three separate lots. One of the lots will be, uh, able to, which is Lot twenty, will be able to handle a hundred thousand square foot plus building. Uh, the second lot, which is Lot number twenty-five, uh, will be used for moxie pest control and aspen, aspen pet crematory. And then the third one, third one has no tenant at this time, but it's Lot twenty-two. Uh, again, this has been through planning and zoning and is recommended for approval by both them and staff.
Any questions or comments?
Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Six-zero first, mayor.
Next up, our resolution?
This is resolution R fourteen dash thirty-nine. Resolution by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Grand Valley, Missouri, to suspend sports commissioner Jay Niskin, veto of ten bills SB five-eight-four, SB six-nine-three, SB six-six-two, SB six-one-two, SB eighty-nine, SB seventy-seven, and House Bill HB fourteen fifty-five, which would have significantly diminished voter proof municipal sales tax revenues forcing cuts to the essential local services for the citizens of Grand Valley.
Mayor, I move we accept resolution fourteen thirty-nine as read.
I have motion, Alderman Arnold, to approve resolution R fourteen dash thirty-nine. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Headley. Any discussion?
Yes, uh, I brought this to the board's attention, um, as well as, uh, information that I received from Mayor Todd, uh, as to the impact that this would have. It is, um, uh, detailed out throughout this resolution. We talked about the impact that these bills have. We have provided information to our representatives in, in the past probably four months, um, encouraging them to really review this. Letting them know what, how it would impact Grand Valley. And actually, most of the other municipalities are doing the same thing with their own, uh, associated, uh, representatives from the House and Senate. Letting them know the impact that it would have. And, uh, with the approval of this, we will turn around and share a copy of this with, uh, our representatives to let them know the hardship that it would cause too.
I, I do know from speaking with Nene Lauer that, uh, she does have significant reservations. She had some pretty good feelings behind some of the issues that were vetoed, included the things that she had fought for. But, uh, it probably wouldn't hurt if individuals in the board had, had time to drop a, drop them a call and tell them that we're really like her to review her stance on that so that, uh, if it doesn't affect the community, I think it'd be a good move.
Yeah. And I can tell you right now, this is the ones I've talked to that, yeah, I don't know.
There's, there's a significant...
They, they give me a different story. I mean, you know, MML tells us one thing. I, you know, we look at financial, what, you know, we look at it on our end and we come up with numbers, but the law argues with me all day long about it. So I think the feeling is very strong there to override it, so...
Phone calls would help.
Yeah.
And the, the numbers are listed, it's on with that resolution. If all of you need those.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Six-zero, mayor.
Okay, next up, city attorney's report.
Mayor report.
Next up is city mayor's staff report.
Yes, so we have some reports this evening. And so the first one, I'll turn to Shannon Davies, your partner, for a question.
Uh, just a real quick update on our fall baseball and T-ball program. Uh, we're in full swing. Uh, we have a little over a hundred and forty kids that registered for fall T-ball, which is boys and girls, and then baseball, which is machine pitch up. Uh, practices began, uh, last week. With a hundred and forty kids, we've got fourteen teams. Oftentimes, some of the challenges are finding, uh, coaches or parents to coach teams. And luckily enough, we've got some great parents out there that are willing to step up and, and coach. Our chief of police being one of them, has coached again, uh, this fall. And the practices began last week. Uh, games are, are, are going to be starting up the week of, uh, September seventh. Uh, we will be conducting interleague play with Oak Grove. They're offering a fall baseball program for the first time this year. Um, and so between the two communities, we've, we've got a nice, uh, sample of teams to, to be able to run a quality league. So, uh, everything's going real well, all baseball right now.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, I just want to let you know that, uh, Public Works Maintenance has completed their sidewalk replacement program, curb and sidewalk, uh, replacement program. You see this on the budget as the annual concrete replacement program. Uh, this year, we were able to do, uh, about eighteen hundred linear feet of curb and about three hundred and forty linear feet of sidewalk, which is actually quite a bit for the crew that we have. Uh, when we talk about, you know, trying to find ways to save money, this was an area that we identified that we could do the concrete work ourselves. Uh, had we contracted this out to do all of the concrete work, work we were going to have done this year, it would have been about ninety-seven thousand dollars to have that work done. By having maintenance do it, they used about two hundred and twenty square yards of concrete and spent eight hundred and twenty-seven man-hours on it. and spent eight hundred and twenty-seven man-hours on it, and, uh, overall, it cost us thirty-eight thousand. So it was a savings of about fifty-eight thousand dollars to the city to have this project, this annual project, done in-house every year. Um, we're just gonna continue to ramp up that program, because everybody knows, if you drive through the farms, or any of the other, uh, parts of the city that have any age on them at all, the concrete's falling apart. So, just wanted to let you know, um, Public Works Maintenance did a fantastic job with the program this year, saved, uh, our residents fifty-eight thousand dollars.
David?
Uh, Mayor, members of the board, just wanted to let you know that we received the information from NPR today, um, regarding our loss control program and our workers' compensation. I'm happy to report that we received two checks from NPR, having given money we received from. Uh, the first check was in the amount of thirty-six hundred and seventeen dollars, and some change, uh, and that's from our loss control recognition program. Your employees have done a fantastic job in training, and, um, maintaining our loss control program, um, requirements, and because of that, we received two percent back on our, um, insurance premium payments. So, um, they've done a fantastic job, and we've been recognized for that. The other check that we received was for twenty-seven hundred dollars, um, and that was for, uh, a reduction in our workers' compensation claims for the year of, uh, two thousand fourteen, two thousand thirteen, fourteen. Um, being on board of directors, I know that the workers' compensation numbers are not good with NPR, uh, but I'm happy to report that City of Green Valley was not included in those numbers, and we actually received a recent decrease in our claim, um, numbers for next year. So, we'll be saving some money next year, and we received some back this year. So, your employees have done a great job in training, and listening, and being safe. I can't top that, so we're done.
Alright. Uh, next up is board of aldermen, report some comment, uh, Alderman Arnold?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Alderman West?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Headley?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Scully?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alderman Shaper?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alderman Johnston?
Yes.
Uh, next up is mayor's report. Uh, I just want to thank, uh, staff for all the work they've put in for the reception for Mr. Leffo last week. That was greatly appreciated, and he really liked it, and I got to brag about it in front of the rest of the mayors, and they might have their publications in their Twitter blast, as they tried to top me, but I still think ours probably topped it, so I'm gonna thank staff for all the time they spent on that. Uh, next time is executive session, we do have a need for, uh, personnel. I don't think anything else to you.
No, but speaking of personnel, if I could just add one thing, you haven't had a chance to see the video of your leadership team, uh, doing the ALS challenge. Um, it was a, a great time, we had all...
Great time, half of you took off running. The only two I saw sticking out, I believe, were, uh, the chief and Shannon.
Whoa, 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 chief had no water on him.
David didn't have much water on her.
I thought he had ice.
I, I did, I agree with that.
He was pretty funny, running.
Well...
Oh, my gosh.
And in my car, at the pool.
Yeah. And, and he stuck it out for the whole time.
It was funny.
So, anyway, but it was, it was a great time. We put out the challenge to, uh, Blue Springs, no girls, but we've not been back in the net, so, we'll see what happens.
Okay, uh, anyone has anything else, then? I will entertain a motion to adjourn the executive session for personnel. Motion from Alderman Johnston, have a second? Second. Second Alderman Headley, any discussion? Seeing none, non-fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Alderman Arnold?
Yes.
Alderman West?
Yes.
Alderman Headley?
Yes.
Alderman Scully?
Yes.
Alderman Shaper?
Yes.
Alderman Johnston? Alright, we'll adjourn the executive session.